Good evening and bienvenue. I see some faces from Quebec in the audience, so thank you for being with us this evening. I'd like to call the March 20th, 2023 Newport City Council meeting to order in council chambers at 6:33 PM. Present are council members Mr. Charbonneau, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Curtis, and Mr. Vaschan. Also at the table are Mr. James Johnson, City Clerk Treasurer, and Ms. Laura Dolgan, City Manager. I'd like to thank you for attending my first city council meeting as proud mayor of Newport. Whether you are here in person or on the link, you are welcome. I have been asked how I would like to be addressed in formal situations. It's fairly straightforward. How about mayor? And I thank you in advance for your respect. I'd like to start my first meeting by reminding all of us of the Newport City Council Meeting Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city affairs. Distinct from public hearings or town meetings, city council meetings are held in public but are not meetings of the public. City council meetings are the only time the city council members have to discuss, deliberate, and decide upon city matters. In an effort to conduct orderly and efficient meetings, the mayor kindly requests your cooperation and compliance with the following guidelines for the policy adopted on December 21st, 2015, and ratified annually. Number one, please be respectful of each other, council members, city staff, and the public. Number two, please raise your hand to be recognized by the mayor. Once recognized, please state your name and address or affiliation. Please address only the mayor and not members of the public, staff, and presenters. But four, please abide by any time limits. Time limits will be used to ensure everyone is heard and that there is sufficient time for the council to complete their agenda within a reasonable timeframe. Five, the mayor will make a reasonable effort to allow everyone to speak once before speakers address the council a second time, per the limits adopted on January 23rd, 2017. Number six, once public comment has been heard, discussion will be limited to the city council members. Seven, please do not interrupt or mock other speakers or otherwise exhibit disruptive behavior during city council meetings. Number eight, please do not repeat the points made by others except to indicate agreement or disagreement with other views. Nine, please use the hallway for side conversations. It is difficult to hear speaker remarks when side conversations are occurring in the city council chambers. Number 10, presentations to the council are not open to public comment. However, per the policy adopted on December 21st, 2015, matters on the agenda requiring a vote are open to public comment immediately prior to the council vote. And lastly, number 11, individuals who do not abide by these procedures will be asked to leave the council chambers. Thank you. The first agenda item is to approve the minutes of March 6th, 2023 regular city council meeting, the March 7th, 2023 annual meeting, and the March 13th, 2023 special meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve the March 6th regular city council meeting minutes.
Mayor, I'll make that motion. We approve the minutes of 6 March, 2023.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second made by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion on approval of March 6 minutes. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those...
Epstein. He wasn't here.
Okay. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the March 7th annual meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Vaschan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Wilson. Discussion on approval of the March 6 minutes. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
Epstein.
Epstein. The ayes have it, motion carried. I will entertain a motion to approve the March 13th special meeting minutes.
So, Mayor, I'll make that motion. We approve the special meeting of 13 March, 23.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion on approval of March 6 minutes. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
Epstein.
Epstein. Agenda item two is public comment. This is the time in the meeting when the public has a chance to speak. This is not intended as a discussion, but we welcome what you have to say. If you would like to speak during public comment, please sign this sheet with your name and subject, then you will have two minutes to speak. At the two minutes, I will let you know that you have 15 or 20 seconds to finish your thought or sentence. We'll start with... No one. No one signed up. Okay. I guess that's a good thing. Agenda item number three is the election of the council president. Do I hear nominations?
Mayor, I nominate John Wilson.
I'll entertain a motion to nominate Mr. John Wilson as the Newport City Council President.
So moved.
Motion made by... Was that you, Mr. Vaschan?
Yes.
Motion made by Mr. Vaschan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Curtis?
You made the motion.
No, Kevin made the motion.
You made the second, right? Did I say Mr. Curtis?
No, he made the motion. Then Chris Vaschan made the second.
Oh, you guys are too fast for me. I can easy on me, okay? It's my first meeting. Okay.
First seven.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of nominating Mr. Wilson as city council president say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Agenda item four is the annual update of the rules and procedures. Nothing has changed on these rules and procedures, so do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the rules and procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Charbonneau, thank you. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the rules and procedures say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Agenda item five is the appointment to DPW, Department of Power and Water, negotiation team. With Ms. Patterson no longer on the council, we will need to appoint a replacement. The mayor will step forward to fill this empty position, but if someone else from the council would like to, the mayor will step aside.
Silence, you chair.
That's what I was afraid of.
So, there are two people?
Yeah. And Chris is already on.
And you're welcome to...
No, I'll do.
So, I will entertain a motion to appoint Councilmember Clark Curtis to the DPW negotiation team.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vaschan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Agenda item six is the authorization to sign warrants pursuant to 24 VSA 1623. Mr. Johnson, would you like to explain that a little bit? And before you do, could you explain just what a warrant is?
A warrant is the cover sheet to the bills that are paid, that we pay. And the reason we appoint somebody to either have the mayor or the president of the council committed, because sometimes there's two, maybe three weeks between meetings, and we can't wait that long to pay the bills. So, basically, it's to pay the bills between meetings.
That's great. Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Johnson. I will entertain... Oops. Hang on. I move to authorize Mayor Beth Barnes and City Council President, Mr. John Wilson, as authorized to sign warrants pursuant to 24 VSA 1623. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vaschan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye to authorize Mayor Beth Barnes and City Council President, Mr. Johnson, as authorized to sign warrants.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson.
Didn't I say Mr. Wilson?
No, you said Mr. Johnson.
Oh, my gosh, you guys. I am so sorry. I'm gonna tell you, I'm a little bit nervous, you know, and it's... It's shawling, right?
I'll get him ready, but he...
Okay, there you go. Mr. Wilson, yes. Did we hear a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Charbonneau, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Agenda item seven is the city government appointments. The first governmental appointment is of city attorneys Stitzel, Page, and Fletcher. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'll make that motion, that we nominate Cisco Page and Fletcher as a city attorney.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Vaschan. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of appointing Stitzel, Page, and Fletcher as city attorneys say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. The next governmental appointment is to cemetery commission. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Paul Minette to cemetery commission?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to put Paul Minette on the East Main Cemetery Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Minette to the cemetery commission say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. The next governmental appointment is to the recreation commission. Is there a motion to appoint Mrs. Jamie Comtoys and Ms. Kelly Rhodes to the recreation commission?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Second made by Mr. Wilson. Do I hear any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of appointing Mrs. Comtoys and Ms. Rhodes to the recreation commission say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. The next governmental appointment is to appoint members to the planning commission and historic preservation. Mr. Kevin Mead and Ms. Carol O'Connell are currently serving, and their terms are both up. They are willing to be reappointed. Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Kevin Mead and Ms. Carol O'Connell to the planning commission and historic preservation for a three-year term ending in 2026?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vaschan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Mead and Ms. O'Connell to the planning commission and historic preservation for three-year terms say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. The next governmental appointment is the reappointment to the harbor commission of Mr. Steve Edgerly, Mr. James Johnson, Mr. Tom Latta, and Mr. John Minette. This is a two-year term ending in 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Vaschan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of reappointing Mr. Edgerly, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Latta, and Mr. Minette to the harbor commission say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. The next governmental appointment is to appoint members to the development review board. Current member Agath Coburn wishes to be reappointed to a two-year term, and Mr. Dan Pickering wishes to change from a full member to an alternate member for a two-year term. Dennis Chenet has stepped forward and wishes to be appointed as an alternate for a two-year term, replacing Harriet Hall. I'd like to express the council's appreciation to Ms. Harriet Hall, who has served faithfully for many years. Is there a motion to reappoint Ms. Agath Coburn to the development review board for two-year term, and to appoint Mr. Dan Pickering and Dennis Chenet as alternate members of the development review board for two-year terms?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Vaschan. Discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Curtis?
I just have a question about... First of all, let me say I know Dennis Chenet well. He's here. Where is he? And there's a process, and I just... I don't know if the process was done. Maybe I'm missing. So, in order to be appointed to the review board since its inception, which I was part of, there's a process. And I looked at the review board minutes, and I can't find, first of all, where Mr. Chenet submitted a letter of interest, and then I can't find in the review board minutes where they interviewed him and made a recommendation. Am I wrong? John?
I guess my question is, did you interview Mr. Chenet?
Pardon?
Did you interview Mr. Chenet?
Um... Do we...
Yeah, he interviewed me.
Yeah. It was... Mr. Chenet has quite a background in so forth and so on. He expressed an interest.
I agree.
And we talked about it at the meeting.
But you know, there's a process.
Yeah. He did not submit a letter. He made mention at the planning commission that he would be willing to step in as an alternate. It was discussed. Right.
So, I want to... Mayor, I want to give my opinion for what it's worth. If anyone is qualified, it certainly does. I think he was 25 years on the zoning board, very commendable, and he's probably one of a handful of people in the city that is more than qualified. But if anyone knows me from the planning commission, I'm just a stickler for details. And there is a process, and in all honesty, I'd rather see him, if he's interested, as a full-time member. And something I was asked in my quest to get here was transparency. How do you feel about transparency? So, I guess I have nothing against Mr. Chenet. I just feel a step was missed.
Thank you for that comment, and I have to admit that I'm not sure how to respond.
I would... I would suggest it's up to the council whether or not they want to step back from this or whether or not they want to pursue and continue with the motion. I'd say it's up to the entire council.
So, do I need to make a motion to see if they want to continue before going into... Oh, I'm sorry, before going into the...
Where we made the motion, we're second, we'll have to withdraw the second. Don't have to withdraw the motion, otherwise the motion gets more hit on.
It's up to the council.
What I would ask, for what it's worth, is that you do what Mr. Pickering wants to do, and who else was it?
Ms. Coburn.
I guess. I would... I'm just thinking out loud, that the motion should be that Agath gets appointed to the term she would like, and that Mr. Pickering get what he's asking for, and that I would... One of the things I was gonna do under new business was ask that an ad for vacancies on the review board and planning commission be put in the paper so that we can get new members. And I was told that seeing there's a new council person and mayor, that more people might come forward. So, I would ask that the second and the motion be withdrawn and a new motion to include Agath and Mr. Pickering's intentions, and encourage Mr. Chenet to submit a letter of interest to, I believe, a city clerk of his interest in the review board.
Thank you for those comments. So, the way I understand it is that I will now make a motion to reappoint Ms. Coburn to the development review board for a two-year term, and Mr. Dan Pickering as an alternate member of the development review board for two years, or two terms, and leave Mr. Chenet's nomination out of it at this time until the proper steps can be taken.
Well, the second's gotta be withdrawn, the motion's gotta be drawn first.
Okay. How do we reverse that?
Yes, it's up to the members if they want...
Okay.
All right, so I'll withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw the motion and hope that Mr. Clark can make the new motion.
Okay, so, the first and the second motions were withdrawn, so I'm gonna start over again. Is there a motion to reappoint Mrs... Did you pronounce it Agath?
Agath.
Agath, I'm sorry, Ms. Coburn, if you're here. Is there a motion to reappoint Ms. Agath Coburn to the development review board for a two-year term, and appoint Mr. Dan Pickering as alternate member of the development review board for two terms?
I would make that motion.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion?
I just want to ask Dennis, or Mr. Chenet, if he understands what I'm... You okay with this?
Yeah, actually, what you've done, Clark, is the proper procedure.
Well, I thought so. I've said publicly, I'm not always right, but I would encourage you to submit a letter of interest, so that's it for my discussion.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor of appointing Ms. Coburn to a two-year term, and Mr. Pickering as alternate to the development review board each for a two-year term, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. The next governmental appointment is to reappoint Chief John Harlemart as health officer. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Vaschan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of appointing Chief Harlemart to health officer say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried.
And... Yeah. I got it here.
I'm also passing around the rules of procedure to be signed?
I just wondered what that was. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great.
The next governmental appointment is the reappointment as tree warden of city landscaper Robert Goslin. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to appoint Mr. Goslin as tree warden?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of reappointing Mr. Goslin to tree warden say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The next governmental appointment is to appoint a second representative to the NVDA, the Northeast Vermont Development Association. The city is entitled to appoint two members, and currently the city manager serves. Since no council member... Oh, excuse me. Are there any council members interested in being appointed to serve on the NVDA?
No.
Okay, no. Okay, and I take that as a no, Chris, yeah? Okay. Since no council members have expressed an interest, the mayor would like this appointment. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I will make that motion to appoint yourself and city manager Dolgan to the NVDA.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Quick question. So, you're already on it, so this is just a nomination for me to become...
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of appointing Mayor Beth Barnes to the NVDA say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. The next governmental appointment is the appointment of the building safety officer. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Frank Chaney, zoning administrator?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Vaschan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Curtis?
Wait, 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 wait. Are we doing the safety officer or zoning?
Building safety officer. Did I get him wrong?
Yeah, you said zoning.
Oh, no, I said, is there a motion to appoint Mr. Frank Chaney, zoning administrator?
You're doing the...
I just said his...
Safety officer, I think.
Right, but I just used Frank's title, that's all.
Okay.
Sorry.
Should say building safety.
The next governmental appointment is the appointment of the building safety officer. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Frank Chaney? Is that right? Yeah, works. Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vaschan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Curtis. Second made by Mr. Curtis. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Chaney as building safety officer say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. The next governmental appointment is the appointment of Chief John Harlemart as the E-911 coordinator. Is there a motion to appoint Chief John Harlemart?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of appointing Chief Harlemart as E-911 coordinator say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. The last governmental appointment is the appointment of the emergency management director. Is there a motion to appoint Chief John Harlemart as chief, as emergency management director?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Vaschan. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of appointing Chief Harlemart as emergency management director say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Agenda item number eight is a request to schedule a public hearing for a zoning bylaw amendment for April 17th, 2023 pursuant to 24 VSA 4442. I would like to invite the zoning administrator and planning commission chair, Mr. John Minette, to share more information about this request. Please feel free to speak from where you are or approach the table.
This is fine. Tonight, we're simply asking that a hearing be scheduled. The specific subject matter is an amendment to the definitions that pertain essentially to the Main Street zoning district. Frank knows the technical term better than I do in terms of what it's called in the bylaw, but the gist of the amendment is to broaden the range of possible uses on the first floor of the buildings on Main Street primarily, and it's intended to try to provide more options for people that might be interested in using some of the vacant spaces and recognizing, you know, the realities that it's harder and harder to attract traditional retail-type businesses. So, at any rate, tonight, the request is simply that a hearing be held, and the specific procedure pertains to a provision in the State Zoning Enabling Act that allows the adoption of interim changes that are limited in duration for two and possibly renewal for a third year. And that procedure has been suggested, or we're suggesting use of that procedure because of the fact that we're in the midst of working on a rewrite and update of the bylaw. because of the fact that we're in the midst of working on a rewrite and update of the bylaw. And one of the things we're looking at is, is essentially the range of uses in all of the industries. So this is, this is intended to deal with, with, with an issue that's arisen fairly regularly in recent years and to try to, as I say, enhance options that are available to people that own buildings on Main Street. So, like I say, at this point, we're just asking that the hearing be scheduled so that people have an opportunity to see the proposed change and come on April seventeenth and comment on it if they so choose.
Great, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Minette, mark your calendars for April seventeenth. I will entertain a motion for the city council to hold a public hearing at the planning commission's request to consider a proposed interim amendment to the bylaws at the Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three regularly scheduled council meeting.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vashon, motion made by Mr. Vashon, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Wilson, discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanna point out that as opposed to our regular meeting time of six thirty, this is gonna be at six o'clock.
Thank you for that. Do I need to act on that, or is that just a matter of interest?
No, I just need to be reminded I showed up late last night.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Charbonneau, for sharing your shortcomings, yes. Hearing no discussion, or hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carried.
Beth Barnes?
Yes, Chris.
Chris Roy, Newport Daily, are those documents online on the website, or can they be, or can they be sent, sent to me?
They are online, Mr. Roy, yeah. And if you need help finding them, let me know, or let Ms. Dogan know, and one of us will get them to you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks for asking. Agenda item nine is new business. Mr. Johnson, any new business?
I do.
Okay.
I've got a vendor's application that needs to be approved for Rich Lansing and Brian Flynn. Now, this is a renewal from last year. They have a wagon that they serve cotton candy, strawberry lemonade, pretzels. And this is for, I thought this was for, you know, he's paying for weekends. One of, Mike's not here, so I don't know which, which event this is for.
Does it have a date?
I'm here on the?
Oh, you are?
On the computer, yeah.
Oh, good, what's that for?
Yeah, they're typically for the July.
Okay, okay, fourth of July.
So that's Mr. Lansing and Mr. Flynn?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he's got his insurance, he's got the picture, he's got the check, so he has renewal from last year. So I need a motion to approve that.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve, would we just call it a vendor request, or?
Yeah, vendor, vendor.
Vendor? Do I hear a motion to approve vendor li, vendor request, a renewal vendor request for Mr. Lansing and Mr. Flynn?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vashon, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau, discussion? All in favor of renewing Mr. Lansing and Mr. Flynn's vendor license, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Back to new business, Mr. Charbonneau, any new business?
No.
No? Mr. Wilson, any new business?
None.
Mr. Curtis?
What I referred to earlier about seeking people for the planning commission and the review board with an ad in the paper. However, I used to know the answer to this, but I don't know the timeline that we allowed for people to apply. You remember, a couple of weeks?
We usually do two or three weeks.
Yep.
We run an ad and we try to make it far enough away so that people have time to organize themselves and submit a letter, and not too far away that they forget about it. So we find three weeks to be a pretty good pattern.
All right. So, I would like to make a motion to, is instruct a harsh word, to instruct the city manager to put an ad in the paper for the development review board and planning commission vacancies.
So do I need to make that motion, or is the city council member?
Usually, you just talk about it.
Oh, is it, all right, then I withdraw the motion.
Great.
So as long as everyone's on the same page.
Ask the city manager to warn it or advertise it and go from there.
Yep, for three weeks.
Thank you.
And it's, it's, so the planning and historic commission are really the same people.
So I'm not, I don't care how it's worded.
We haven't.
You know, you know what to do.
We generally run it in the Newport Daily and the Barton Chronicle.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis, Mr. Vashon, any new business?
No, thank you.
No, and Ms. Dogan, any new business?
No, thank you.
So, agenda item ten, oh, excuse me, I have new business. Sorry, I almost forgot. So, the very first thing that I was asked to do as mayor, when I was a day into it, I was contacted by the Vermont AmeriCorps, AmeriCorps coordinator to make a statement because it was AmeriCorps Week last week. And I did submit something, but I'm just gonna read it right now. And I see two AmeriCorps members in the room, are there any others that I might not know? Could you raise your hand if you're an AmeriCorps member? Don't be shy. Okay, awesome, so I know that there are many more AmeriCorps members in Newport, but thanks for being here tonight, I'd like to read the letter that I wrote as mayor. My first letter as mayor. "Celebrating AmeriCorps Week. As the newly-elected mayor of Newport, it's a great honor to say Happy AmeriCorps Week, two thousand twenty-three, to all those members, past and present, who have served our beautiful community on the shores of Lake Memphamagog. I have personally known many AmeriCorps members over the past ten years and am always impressed by their hard work, their energy, and their commitment to their own personal growth and to our community. They serve with dedication, and I personally feel that their time in the Northeast Kingdom will provide many lasting memories for them and for us. I have even known a few who chose to stay and were glad they did. We look forward to welcoming many, many more AmeriCorps members and hope that they will feel at home and know that they are valued. Thank you for your service." And I laminated one that you can take home with you. Yeah, so, let's see, so. Old, is there any old business? I'll start with Mr. Johnson.
I do.
Okay.
I've got some liquor and tobacco licenses I need. Motion to approve these, I've got a second class and tobacco license for Walgreens, second class and a tobacco license for Jimmy Quick, a first class, third class, and two outside consumption permits for the VFW. I just need a motion to, to liquor and tobacco licenses.
Do I need to do each one separately? And do I, do I name them when I do the motion?
Do a whole bunch.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve liquor licenses as stated by Mr. Johnson, renewals for Walgreens, Jimmy Quick, VFW?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, discussion? All in favor of the renewal of these liquor licenses, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. Mr. Charbonneau, do you have any old business?
I do. I've come to the understanding that Mr. Phil White has a parade request, and there might be some confusion about it. The mayor, please, could we have it on the next agenda? Perhaps either he could be here or, or representing them.
Yeah, duly noted, thank you. Mr. Wilson, do you have any, any new old business?
None.
No old business? Mr. Curtis? No, Mr. Vashon?
No, thank you.
And Ms. Dogan?
No, thank you.
I'd like to announce the next city council meeting, scheduled for April third, two thousand twenty-three, at six thirty in this very room. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Vashon, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, meeting adjourned at seven twelve PM. Thank you, everyone, for being here.